Ready? I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of August 20th. This will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Avalon Housing Authority. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we may pause for a moment to remember Raul and Luis Hernandez. They are brothers that passed away within a couple of weeks of each other. Please be seated. And Gabby, if we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Haves.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And I'd like to read into the record that Mayor Protem Cassidy will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting.
Okey-dokey. City Manager?
We have a representative here this evening from Southern California Edison to speak on the Energy Savings Assistance Program.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. So I'm really pleased to introduce my colleague Mary Finn, who's with our Customer Program Services Department. And she's going to talk about the Energy Savings Assistance Program that we have, as well as the multifamily housing programs. And I hope that folks on the island will be able to take advantage of it.
Great. Thank you, Adeline. Nice to see you.
Hello. Thank you very much for having me this evening. Hi. As I mentioned before, my name is Mary Finn Parker, and I work at Southern California Edison. Edison offers a lot of different variable rebate programs to the various communities. One of them is the Energy Savings Assistance Program that I'm going to explain to you right now. So it's an income-qualified program, and it's for those tenants that are under 200% of federal poverty guidelines. If they are, and they can show us by either having their paycheck stubs, or they can show us by some kind of documentation that they receive, possibly from the state, that shows that they are under the federal poverty guidelines, then we offer them a lot of things at no cost. This is the federal poverty guidelines that we have. It's based on your household, the number of people in your household. Obviously, the more people you have in your house, then the more money that you're allowed, it's allowable to be in our program. I have some sheets over here on the Energy Savings Assistance Program if anybody is actually interested in it. Some of the things that Edison gives, I'll be mentioning it here in a few minutes, and hopefully that we can help them in several different ways. Some of the things we give them are, we give them new lighting, new LED lighting for no cost. We give them smart power strips. We try to give them in-home energy education. If they had an older than a 2001 refrigerator, they would get a brand-new refrigerator from us. It would be freezer on the top, refrigerator on the bottom, same size as what they have. They couldn't go from a 20 cubic to a 26, things like that. So they would get one-for-one for the refrigerator. And then some other things, but torch or lamps, things like that. But most of it would be like the LED lighting that we'd probably be looking at the most for the apartments and units, and things like that. They must have an Edison account, so they qualify for that. They must have our program income requirements. And we have to have somebody there to help us. So if it's the property manager, owner of the building, things like that, that can help us get in. So we can, because we have our service people actually do the changing out of the lightbulbs, changing the refrigerator, things like that. So we also offer, for Energy Savings Assistance, we also have a program for landlords and the owners of apartment buildings. So if they have tenants that qualify for these programs, I can get into more details with each person individually that has this, but we can also offer the landlords, the owners, free common area lighting, too. So we can do a lot of things with the common area and change that all out, whether it be exit signs, LED linear lamps, LED lights. We can do things like that for no cost, too. So that's the Energy Savings Assistance Program. Does anybody have any questions on that part first?
No.
No? So we also have a multifamily rebate program, too. We have a residential and multifamily rebate program, too. One of the things we offer that many of you probably already know is the smart thermostats. We give $50 rebate for smart thermostats. It could be a Nest thermostat, EcoBee, Honeywell, different products that qualify for the smart thermostats. We also do $200 for the pool pump. If you have an apartment building or a residential house that has a swimming pool, we do the variable speed drive for the pool pump, and it's a $200 rebate that comes right from the suppliers that offer the pool pumps. We also do some lighting, some LED lighting that we offer for the multifamily, for like apartments. And we also do it for HOA communities, for the common area. We're also, this one just started a few weeks ago. We are now offering $500 for a heat pump electric water heater. So if you already have an electric water heater, 50 to 55 gallons, and you're thinking about purchasing a new electric heat pump water heater, then you can get a $500 rebate from Edison. The guidelines, the requirements are right here on the slide, but if you have more questions about the heat pump water heaters, I can go into more details with whoever's interested in that, too. Some of the multifamily rebates that we offer are candelabra lighting. We offer downlights, the ParBR lights, and your linear four-foot fluorescents, and your LED downlights, so you can see more in common areas. And those are all for like apartment buildings and for HOA communities, things like that.
And I'm sorry, and then it says, "An installation." So Edison comes out and installs, or?
Yes, we do it. So in the Energy Savings Assistance Program, we come out, and if it's a tenant that we're servicing for the no-cost items, our crew will come out there and do all the install for no cost. If it's the common area and they qualify for that, the owner does, then we come out also and do that ourselves. So we install everything and take everything away. For the multifamily, same thing. We would actually have a contractor, one of our approved contractors, come out here to do the project. So any of these would be one of our already pre-approved contractors that already has a work agreement with Edison.
Okay, great.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Any questions from the audience? I think we're good.
My card's over there, and I have some brochures over there. I'm more than happy to leave them here, and then if anybody has any questions later, have them feel free to call me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Thanks, Mary. Thank you, Adeline. Nice to meet you, Donna. Okay. I think that's it for presentations tonight. So announcements and written communications?
I have two written communications with questions, comments, and concerns relating to item number six tonight, which is the development impact fees. And I received this afternoon a written communication from the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm going to ask the deputy city clerk to read most of it.
I would like to read into record an email the City Council received today from the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce regarding the possible return of the Royal Caribbean cruise lines. To Avalon City Council, a recent letter to the editor in the Catalina Islander newspaper and post on Facebook have inaccurately portrayed the facts at hand regarding the possible return of Royal Caribbean cruises to Catalina Island. Current state of affairs: It is important to note that no deal has been struck. The ship's agent has been in communication on behalf of Royal Caribbean, and city representative has responded. The ship's agent requested Saturday and Tuesday visits for the period of July through September beginning in 2021, what has been considered. The time of year and day of week were among the top items for consideration upon being approached by the ship's agent. Based on current demands, the only days of the week between July through September that harbor facilities could absorb tendering operations were Wednesdays or Thursdays. A Wednesday RCCL call would not negatively impact cross-channel delivery/departure of passengers. A Wednesday, July through September, call by RCCL would take advantage of peak staffing and area facilities, but not likely overwhelm them due to there being no ship in port. Impacts on infrastructure were seen as negligible at 3,000 passengers over the course of six to eight hours. Cross-channel carriers and boats at peak demand often bringing more than 3,000 additional passengers in a day. Said carriers are unlikely to add that many passengers on a Wednesday based on typical demand. Impacts to business operations were seen as beneficial, especially with most operators reporting declining patronage year-over-year, museums, retailers, zipline, et cetera. The decline is supported by City of Avalon revenue tracking summarized below. Admissions tax revenue has been down every month of 2019, and for the past 12 months showing a decline of 8.6%. Harbor use fees revenues are down every month year-to-date 2019 and nearly flat with last year on a 12-month basis. Sales taxes also showing a decline of 7.2% for the past 12 months. Impacts to the visitor and resident experience were seen as negligible, if not beneficial, and adding revenue to the coffers of all concerned. Operators are already at peak staffing, so no significant change in overhead would be incurred. Impacts on our resources are also minimal. Compared to overnight guests, a cruise ship visitor has at least one less mill and doesn't use the water sewer systems as much as overnight guests, who eat out more, shower, and have bed sheets laundered, et cetera.
Okay. And that's it? Okay. Thank you.
That was hard to hear. You can give a hard copy of that, please, on the desk.
Absolutely. Thank you. Jenny asked that we just have a hard copies put out for the community, and we will do that. Thank you, Jenny.
We'll put them at the front counter tomorrow.
At the front counter tomorrow. Okay. And if somebody wants mine today, they can have it. Okay. Department head report.
Just want it noted that I have three department heads that are absent this evening, so be quick.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Two quick items for you. Mole Phase One, the contractor has mobilized, is on the island. The first couple of days moved a lot of material and equipment to the island. You can see the fencing around the project, and you can see where the contractor has taken the designated footprint to continue for the duration of the project. The next three weeks, contractor will be setting up the scaffold and prepping the underneath for repairs of the structure, the public parking that was added on the ramp. Next to the water has been allocated to the contractor for a lay-down yard for the duration of the project. The public parking that was on the other side of the ramp remains one-hour public parking, with the exception of one of those spots was allocated to the van for Avalon baggage because they had both vehicles back in the wharf area, and so we allocated one of those spots so they could continue their business. The other spot that they're allocated, they have a storage area that was allocated with the fencing around there, next to where the lockers were. And lockers have been relocated to the front of the building for the duration of the project, so that they're still able to be used by the public. The mole business parking that was added last year on the wharf area has been relocated to Pebly Beach Road and is, again, that same permit parking that was for the wharf area, has 12 spots for the businesses there. It is permit, autoet, no overnight parking, and so the businesses can take a short walk out there and park. So hopefully that reduces the impacts from the project, as the business parking still has it, the public still has a place to park. And the area where most of, the drive area where the bus is and the drop-off zone is being open now, just like it was before. So once things settle out, the balance this week, I think that you'll see the contractor in their area, and the public will have their designated area, and everything should work out fine. One of the sea caves that was along the walkway on Pebly Beach Road collapsed today. The top of the pavers collapsed in. So as you recall, we're prepping for a project to make those repairs on all of those sea caves during this fall. And Public Works will be out there starting tomorrow to safety up that spot, but we'll also go and take a look at those areas in the pavers and see if they did indeed get worse during some of these winter storms. And there may be some other areas that we need to close off until we do that major project in the fall. So just realize that that's why that area is being safetied up and closed off. Any questions? Yes?
I heard a bunch of comments about yesterday's ramping up of the project of the mole, where there was a lack of communication in advance of what was going to be happening. And so as we go forward, can we make sure that everybody out there knows what's happening?
Okay. We can do that. I was out there many times myself for many months, and then talked to, I think, just about everybody, and everybody has my card, and they know that I'm the point person out there. And with any project of that magnitude, it's going to be a little bit of a rough start as people get used to what's happening, and we're twisting the dials, monitoring those things, and making sure that everybody, everything settles in nicely. It's normal for a project to be a little rough the first couple of days when it's that magnitude, and you're having a contractor coming to an area that they're not normally working with their equipment. And then, you know, the materials are coming on a barge. There's a lot of factors involved there that are, you hope, you know, just even if the barge didn't show up that day because of weather, you hope that everything's going to line up just the way it does. So, and we keep on, we're there for the duration of it, so if somebody has a question, they have my phone number, they can call me, you know, my cellphone.
Well, and that was my question. What is the approximate duration of the project?
I would say that we're going to be in there for a good six months, okay? And if we're earlier than that, great. But, you know, that
I'd rather hear six months.
Once we get done underneath, we'll probably give you a better indication of when, you know, the true end of the project's going to be. But, you know, we may have some days that it gets to be rough seas, and we have to pull out from underneath. So the main focus right now, you're going to see with the contractor, is underneath. Get out and get the underneath done. Okay, thank you.
So I guess we can't fish off the
No.
We're not, okay.
I guess that's one of the impacts that we would be sending people around down Pebly Beach Road to fish off the shore, past the area, not
The preserve.
Yeah, the protected area.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. I just wanted to quickly report on, we had a small fire on Sunday up at the Zangray Hotel where they're doing construction. They had a grinder that set off some of the matting material that they use for erosion control and got into some of the brush, but a very quick response from Harbor calling in the smoke and from the Fire Department, both City and County. It was a very quick response, got that knocked down very quickly and kept it from spreading into the structure or into the brush. So I just wanted to report on that, and that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Questions, Council? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good evening, Council. I just wanted to give you a quick update. Approximately a little over a year ago, there was a serious assault, a fight that occurred down at the Avalon Grill. One of the residents of Avalon suffered a broken nose, chipped teeth, broken rib, so forth. And today was the court case, the preliminary hearing. I went to it today, and the person that is not a resident of Avalon, the suspect, was held to answer, and he will have a jury trial coming up. So that's good news because we know that he did it based on the injuries from the victim. And the last thing I have is we'll be working with Southern California Edison and the other first responders, Fire Department, Avalon County Fire Department, on an annual drill that we do with them every year. We do tabletop exercises, and we do actual live exercises, and that's going to be coming up in September. We have meetings scheduled with Southern California Edison on that.
And I have a question. What about all the cannabis that was floating on the backside of the island? Can you report?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Basically, what happened was there was a suspicious boat that called in that they were taking on water. We knew it was suspicious because of the way they had fishing poles with no lures and no tackle and blah, blah, blah. So what happened was they called the Coast Guard requesting help because they were sinking. Coast Guard, along with Baywatch, ISMS, and one of our deputies got out there, and they ultimately saved the people, took them to the mainland, and did some investigation to see why they were out there. Next morning, everybody starts finding all these bales of marijuana. Sheriff's Department, along with Baywatch, ISMS, found 23 bales. The Coast Guard found another 20. A boat that was in the fishing tournament over the weekend found a couple, so everybody's finding all of them. There's still one missing. Anybody know where that is? Nah, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So, no, we don't know exactly how many there are, but it's, the problem with that, all joking aside, if somebody did keep one, you don't know where that's coming from. You know, you don't know what's in it. I mean, it is marijuana, we know that. However, you don't know if it's, you know, they could put other stuff in there. You just don't know where it's coming from. So the Coast Guard is handling the entire investigation, and we stopped receiving calls of people finding them, so we think we got all of them, or at least most of them.
Okay. And you can't automatically say, "These are the guys or girls, and this is their cannabis." You can't automatically do that.
Yeah, that's going to be up to the US Coast Guard to put their investigation together to determine if that was theirs. But I'm not the smartest person in the world, but it's pretty suspicious.
Yeah, okay.
We never have any marijuana floating out there any other time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Captain.
Just really quick. Amanda Cook, Planning Department. Happy news about the Zangray. The fire, of course, did not do any damage. We're doing a final walkthrough tomorrow, and so they're hoping to get their certificate of occupancy by the end of this week, early next week. So we'll have them up and running here very shortly as well.
Great.
So, any questions for me?
They're going to, what's part of the CEO getting rid of all the trash?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
It's part of the CEO getting rid of all the trash around the place?
Yes, they have to clean up the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now we need City Manager report.
I just wanted to report back on a couple of items. At the last council meeting, there was a group of Councilmember Albers' friends that came forward and requested for the placement of a rock and a tree. I didn't email until yesterday afternoon to three of Pam's close friends, the ones that I had worked closely with for the memorial service. So I thought they were the best three to approach, and so we are working now on a location for a rock and a memorial plaque. And then following up on the transportation and parking study because of the concerns for the people on Descanso, Bob Greenlaw and I have been, we went out one day, and we're really looking at some of the other streets as well as Descanso, and internally, we are discussing some different ideas, trying to figure out what is the least impact on all the other streets, too, but still aiding in their concerns. And then the last thing would be to remind you, Council and the public, that we'll be having our second revenue generating study session in two days at 10 o'clock, from 10 to 12.
And has the Planning Commission vacancy, is that deadline been met, or is it this week?
We've received two applications so far, and that will be on the September 3 City Council agenda.
Okay, great. And I would like to be able to interview them like I've done in the past, if that's possible? Okay, thank you. Okay. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, good. Council?
I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing.
Endemic had the ribbon cutting, and it was really wonderful, and the shrimp that they made was just fantastic. It was like a math shake in his head. Have you tried that shrimp? It's really good. Anyway, that was really good. So last year sometime, we talked about wanting to have an entry in the Rose Parade, and we were all kind of excited about that. And it was about $5,500 or so for the entry fee, and if you didn't end up doing anything with it, they gave you your money back. And I'm, and I don't believe we put the money in the budget during the budget session. So I don't know how we can, how we should go about if we want to relook at that.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Scott was asking me a question, and I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Well, we had talked about putting in money so we could, we could put in an application for a float in the Rose Parade, and there seemed to be
You're correct. We did not put anything in the budget for that. So can I report back to you on that?
Sure.
And where the monies would come from, and how we will proceed.
Okay. And then it was, though, of course, the city wouldn't put any money into the development of the float, but Dan has been in communication with the float builder on the mainland, and anyway, so we were getting some traction, and he's got a lot of good information, so if we wanted to go that way, it might be definitely something to discuss. Casino dock music on Saturday was very successful, and I think Dan and everybody, very well-attended. Music was, Joe's band was fantastic. That was great. And if for the next council meeting, I don't know if it has to be in closed session or whatever, a discussion on the casino dock, kind of an update, and if where we are and what we are on the casino dock project? Certainly. Okay. And then I've got a magazine, a fishing magazine. Senate Bill 1387. What this bill would do would change the validity dates of a fishing license from January 1 through December 31 to 365 days from the date of purchase. And that's been, that's very successful in other states. It kind of is a, you know, if you go fishing on, I don't know, they sell a lot more licenses when you can buy them on a certain time, and they'd be valid for a year. And I didn't know if that was something that we would want to support, and we'd want to support, or if it needs to go to the harbor. Let's see what they think about it first, but
Which bill was it, Mayor?
It's Assembly Bill 1387.
Thank you.
I have the information here, so I can give that to you, if that's okay. I mean, it seems to make sense. Yeah, okay. Mathel, I have? Okay, Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Nice to see you all again. I wanted to announce just briefly that all libraries in the county have been given each a $5,000 grant from Janice Hahn, our supervisor. We're going to use that money at Avalon for adult programming, programming for adults. I'm looking in for, in to some really interesting stuff. I'm going to have a guy who does a Woody Guthrie concert. I'm going to have a person who will look over your resume, which I think would be something I really want to pursue. I want to pursue that sort of program a lot. Also, I'm going to do some Japanese floral arrangement. That'll be fun, too. I also wanted to say that I've managed to get the Science Librarian Project, the Make Mo Project, back to Avalon, starting in September. Those are the nice librarians that come out with little robots for the children, and they put together the robots, and they learn coding. Very excited about that program. We had it for most of the early part of the year, but then there were some internal things, and I didn't have a librarian who could come out and do it. Now I do. So starting in September, we're going to have Make Mo back again, so kids can come and do some nice science stuff, and we're going to have some grown-up programs with science as well. So we're going to have that. Our ukulele, the Friends of the Avalon Library Ukulele Program, is still continuing on Wednesdays in our park, People's Park, is that right? So we still come by the library, pick up a ukulele, join us in the park. Coming up, it's going to be a quiet end of August, but coming up on the 12th of September, I've invited a world storyteller to come and talk stories of the world. And then on the 26th of September, I have a puppeteer magician, who's a former puppeteer, who's going to come and do a sort of magic show with puppets. That should be pretty cool. Chess club, I've started a really delightful chess club on the first and last Tuesday of every month. That's going to come next week, our chess club. And today, we had our history talk with Chuck Liddell, who had a great time. Boy, did he enjoy talking about the fire. Anyway, thank you very much. I think that's about all for right now. Always a pleasure. Goodbye, your library.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else?
Good evening, Janie Hall, 334 Clarissa. I've noticed that it's been a month since Richard's resigning, and I'm wondering about your progress in discussing a new candidate and why, for instance, Joe Sampson isn't sitting up here right now, so you and why, for instance, Joe Sampson isn't sitting up here right now, so you have a, we have another active member of the Council, since three is barely a quorum, and I just would like to say that that would make the most sense in your theories of succession that were put forward, and I also think he would be a nice balance to the Council, which is more weighted in the business community side now, and he, Joe is man of the people, good old working-class boy, and I think we could use his input. I think a lot of people would expect that. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to mention also, um, I brought it to Denise's attention. I just got mine in the last couple of days in the mail from Catalina Broadband. I don't watch a lot of sports, but they're removing channels 125 and 126, which is Fox Sports Prime Ticket and Fox Sports West. Somebody said that that means you wouldn't be able to watch a Dodger game, and that kind of thing, and I don't, so I don't know how that works, and how they decide what they remove and what they don't. Did everybody get the letter? Okay, a lot of you did. So, I don't, I don't know. I wanted to look into how that's decided, because there are a couple, there are some baseball enthusiasts that are definitely disappointed that that's going away. Um, I don't know. And, but, but you will get a $5 reduction on your bill. So, and I don't know how all of a sudden I got HBO on my television, never knew I had it.
My TV shows it.
Well, I know. Yeah. Okay, anyway, I had, I had punted this to Michael Palmer, and I didn't know. Anyway. Okay. If there's no more oral communication, we'll get, go to the consent calendar.
We have five items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is minutes from the August 6, 2019 regular City Council meeting. Second one is warrants for a total disbursement of $1,269,964.48, and that's from the period of July 27 through August 9. The third one is adopting a resolution accepting the fiscal year 1819 fourth quarter treasurer's report. Number four is to authorize staff to advertise and, advertise and solicit a request for proposals to provide a cost-to-service study for the City of Avalon Sewer, Saltwater, and Solid Waste Enterprise Funds, and that's a follow-up from our first revenue generating study session on July 18. The fifth one is to adopt a resolution designating the Public Works Administrative Analysts as the City of Avalon's representative to the Los Angeles Gateway Region Integrated Regional Water Management Joint Powers Authority governing body, and designating the Public Works Director and the Grants Administrative Analysts as the alternate board member. And as I believe we entered into that, um, organization in 2015, and this resolution will just establish those positions, unless those positions change, and that way, every year, we won't have to, every two years, we don't have to bring it back as a resolution. And Jordan currently is the member of staff that attends that meeting monthly and reports out.
So he's the Public Works Administrative Analyst. Okay, perfect. Council?
I'm good.
Good. I'll make a motion that we approve items number one through five on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Call for the vote.
Three ayes, one absent. Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Our next item is a public hearing, and this is on, um, the diff, and I'm gonna have Michael Palmer come up and start, start us up on them.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. Uh, Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager. Uh, the item before you is a public hearing for the Development Impact Fees, and I just wanted to give kind of a brief overview again. I know we've been up here on several occasions, um, so there's a little bit of familiarity, but for those of you who are just joining us for the first time, Development Impact Fees are fees charged by a local government, uh, and basically what they do is they defray all or a portion of the proportional cost for new development, uh, for future development and, uh, infrastructure needs. So, you've got, um, uh, new facilities that are planned, uh, current improvements to our, uh, infrastructure, and the Development Impact Fees would help fund a portion of those. They don't fund the entire thing, they would only fund a small portion. The city and taxpayers and existing services would be responsible for coming up with, uh, the other portion of that. So if a project costs $1,000, uh, new development might be responsible for coming up with 500 of that, and then the other 500 would be for, uh, would be paid by the public in, in by city. Uh, these are imposed as a condition of property development, so you would pay these, um, prior to, uh, if implemented, new developers would come in, and they would pay these prior to actually developing the, the land. Uh, and this is authorized by the Cali, the California Mitigation Fee Act, which is also known as Assembly Bill 1600, um, and, uh, it states in there that, uh, there's certain, certain things and certain processes that cities need to do in order to, uh, have this item up for a discussion. One of them is to develop a NEXUS study, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that NEXUS study is. Another, um, item in there is, in the NEXUS study, you've got to meet some certain requirements and draw a reasonable relationship between these, uh, projects, uh, future projects and, and costs. And, uh, we originally had identified nine different fee categories. That's changed, um, based off of, uh, previous City Council meetings, uh, and also some, uh, later discussions as well. Capacity charges, on the other hand, are not quite, um, the same thing. They're fairly similar, but they're imposed on newer upsized connections to water or sewer systems. Uh, they pay, uh, developers would pay for a reasonable estimated cost of capacity, so their capacity charges, they're not a development fee. Uh, they aren't held to the same requirement, uh, for a public hearing, but they do need to be considered in, at, at a public meeting. So, uh, we don't have to have a formal public hearing for capacity charges, but there needs to be, it needs to be presented, and Council still needs to, uh, take that into consideration, um, prior to adopting them. Uh, we can also, uh, come back and, uh, change any of those at any, uh, future date. So, the NEXUS study, uh, the final NEXUS study was just completed, uh, earlier this month or late last month, and it, the, the NEXUS study does two different things. Number one, it documents the relationship between new development and cost of public facilities needed to serve the growth through 2030. Uh, it also provides estimates on the cost of those facilities, and calculates those fees and charges by land use type. So, there's, uh, different land use has different impacts, and those are all calculated into this study. When adopting the Development Impact Fees, uh, cities are required to look at several different criteria. Number one, we have to identify the fee purpose, which is in that study. Uh, identify the use of the fee revenues, determine a reasonable relationship between the fee's use and the type of development paying those fees. Uh, we also need to develop a, or determine a reasonable relationship between the need for the fee and the type of development paying the fee, and then determine a reasonable relationship between the fee amount and the cost of the facility attributable to the development paying the fee. And so, the NEXUS study did that, and we had, um, several, uh, rounds of discussions about, you know, what kind of facilities were included in there. All of those facility, those new facilities, and, uh, if there were any infrastructure improvements or upsizing to any of those facilities, those were all taken from, yeah, all of our policy documents. So, it came from the general plan, the Parks and Rec master plan, and all those other lateral, uh, documents that helped support that. So, this is not something that we just kind of arbitrarily pulled, pulled out, or we asked the community. The community was involved in that, because they were, um, they had their input put into those plans, but we took those projects out and then calculated those costs, um, accordingly. So, as I mentioned before, there's two different types of fees that we're looking at. One is Development Impact Fees, the other is Capacity Charges. Uh, the original fee, the original proposed diff categories had nine different categories, and then based off of Council, um, direction, staff took in, uh, either folded them into an existing, uh, category, or it was eliminated altogether. And so, the fee categories that you have before you today are the fire protection facilities, parks and recreation, general government and public facilities, circulation, which parking got kind of, uh, folded into the circulation, um, portion of that, uh, transportation facilities, and landfill fund. Uh, there were two different capacity charges. There was wastewater and reclaimed water. After going back and talking to, uh, staff, uh, hearing some of the discussions, um, and speaking with our, uh, City Attorney's Office, uh, what we ended up doing is we took out the reclaimed water fee, but we can bring that back at a future date. Part of the reason for taking it out completely, um, from consideration right now is, we're in the process of doing a feasibility study for, uh, a reclaimed water facility. So, it felt it was a little premature to move forward with implementing a fee when we hadn't even completed the feasibility study and made a determination on whether that made sense for our community or not. Uh, indication is pointing towards potential, um, but without it being confirmed, without that, uh, report finalized, uh, we can't make that, uh, determination. So, we might be bringing that back, um, to Council for consideration, uh, a, a future date, probably within a year or so. So, this is the current, uh, charges. I know that the chart is a little bit hard to see. Um, for single family, the, the fees would be paid on a per dwelling unit. So, for, uh, one house, it, fees would come out to just under $26,000. The original proposed fee was, I want to say, about $37,000, um, based off of direction and looking at, uh, taking out some of the projects and, uh, limiting some of the fee categories. That number has since changed. Uh, so, it's, it's been lowered. Uh, the multifamily, uh, per dwelling unit fee would be $31,000. Lodging, um, retail, office, industrial, medical, uh, clinics, leisure hospitality services, um, public, uh, facilities and transportation warehouse. Those would all be calculated, the fee would be calculated on a, uh, 1,000 square foot, uh, floor area, so per 1,000 square feet. So, those kind of range anywhere from a low of, uh, just under $5,000 to a high, uh, of $20,000 for lodging. Uh, when looking at where these compare to existing, uh, cities and other jurisdictions, uh, we are the, on both of the graphs, Avalon's proposed are the ones that are, uh, furthest to the left. So, we're the dark blue line, uh, on the single family, and again, on the multifamily. And so, you can see, while we're a little bit higher on some, we're, uh, also lower on others. So, we're kind of almost in the middle, uh, especially for the single family residents. Uh, in the multifamily, we're probably on about par. Um, it's a little difficult to, uh, compare jurisdictions to jurisdictions, because there's a lot of things that are incorporated into those calculations. Part of it is based on unique community needs. Uh, so it's not really necessarily comparing apples to apples. Um, every single city has different fees, and those different fees are calculated on different projects, and they've got different factors that they look at, so they're all unique. I just wanted to put that out there, but, you know, as best we can, uh, compare that, that's kind of how they stack up. We can also look at, and I don't have it transposed on ours, but if you look at, uh, the slide prior, the, for the single family and the multifamily, we're at about, you know, 27 and about $31,000, and when you look at 27, $31,000 for, uh, how we stack to other areas within California, like Los Angeles, Sacramento, uh, Roseville, Oakland, Irvine, and Fremont, uh, we're much lower than, uh, a lot of the cities from Oakland over to the right, uh, and we're a little bit higher on the other cities to the left. So, the recommendations, uh, here before you is to hold the public hearing. So, open it, uh, solicit, uh, public comment, and then close public comment. Uh, adopt the resolutions, accepting the findings of the NEXUS study and establishing the Development Impact Fees and the Capacity Charges, and then introduce and waive further readings for both ordinances. Staff did receive two public comment letters. Uh, one of them was by the Catalina Island Company, and, uh, they had a lot of questions in terms of some clarifications. Uh, in the end, uh, they did ask, uh, Council to defer a vote, uh, to adopt. I don't know if their stance, since we've provided response, has changed. I, I know they're in the audience, and I'll let them kind of speak to that, um, if we had answered their questions sufficiently. And then we received an email, uh, from another resident who, uh, had, uh, initially sought some clarifications, but seemed to be in support of, uh, Development Impact Fee in some form. Any questions?
Explain to me, because I think you have, or Bob Green, Mr. Greenlaw has, so, and all of these are, the fees and everything are based on growth by a certain time. And so, if, like I was saying to Bob, if I don't think that we're gonna grow by 1,400 people by the year 2030, or whatever the year is, how does that play out in the whole thing with the fees? And I think his answer was, if it doesn't grow, you don't have development, so it doesn't matter. Is that pretty much right?
So, there's, yeah, there, no, there is a, um, there's a couple of different factors that are involved in how the fees were calculated. There's, um, uh, population, employment, and housing projections. Those were all taken from, uh, what was, uh, communicated out in a couple of different documents. Number one was, and 2030 was the baseline there. Um, 2030 was identified in our city's general plan, which is our governing, um, development policy. Uh, we also have, uh, in addition to the general plan, some of these factors, uh, were based off of SCAG, the Southern California Associated Government's 2016 estimates. Um, and I, uh, in the appendix, I can tell you exactly what they, that was their employment density summary report. Um, and, uh, there are a few other, there are a few other, um, documents in there, as such as the general plan, EIR, uh, and some other ones. So, the, the, the factors are, are, are based on that. Now, if you adopt the fees as is, um, there are a couple of reporting requirements that the, that are, we, we would be required to implement. One is, on an annual basis, we have to, um, continually revise these, revisit the, the fees, and then come up with, um, a report that would talk about the amount of the fee, the beginning and ending balances of the account or fund, uh, the amount of fees collected, any interest earned. We would need to identify each public improvement on which the fee revenues were expended, and if they weren't, um, just show where they're allocated and that we are still moving. If we decided not to proceed forward with that, then that, those fees would then be returned to the developers if, if nothing ever materialized. You don't have to spend them right away, you can continue to collect those fees, and you can continue to save, and we could, uh, continue to, uh, seek out other grants and other, uh, other offsets, um, to pay for our share of that while we amass, uh, the amount that we needed in order to see that, uh, development implemented. Um, and then we would also have to describe any transfers that were made. Uh, the, uh, city can also, uh, look at, uh, and reevaluate the projects and the project costs, and adjust the fees accordingly. So, you know, if projects, uh, scopes are reduced, we would go through, and we can reduce the amount of fees, uh, and then readopt them, uh, on an annual basis. And, and then every five years, we need to have an additional report that's a little bit more extensive, and basically, we can update the NEXUS study, uh, and then present, uh, a much more robust, um, Development Impact Fees, or we can eliminate some of those from there.
Okay. And I just have a question. On a single family, and just, oh, 27, 647, so if I'm a one-bedroom house, or I'm a six-bedroom house, I pay $27,000?
If you are a one, uh, if you are a single-family residence, it would be $25,840. If you were a developer, and you, as the tenant, wouldn't pay that, it would be the developer. If you're a developer and you were putting in a, uh, multifamily complex, let's say an apartment building, so per unit, whether that was a three-bedroom unit or a one-bedroom unit, each of those units would be, uh, charged $31,000.
But if I'm building a tiny house, or I'm building a mansion on the hill, the fee is, the, that 27, 20, whatever, is all the same?
If it's categorized as a single-family, uh, unit, then yes.
Does that seem appropriate?
I'm sorry?
I don't know. If that, just in fire protection alone, if I'm fire protecting six, you know, a, a 4,000 square foot house, or if I'm, or if I have a 650 square foot little home, does that seem appropriate, I guess? Just a question.
The other thing to think about, and while you necessarily wouldn't do this with, um, in the instant, in the example with the single family, but in larger developments, uh, retail, commercial, industrial, or even multifamily, uh, anytime, uh, city can enter into a development... commercial, industrial, or even multifamily, anytime the city can enter into a development agreement, or there can be in lieu, or the city has the ability, if they're implemented, to waive those fees, depending on circumstances, we can do that if a developer was proposing to come in and do affordable housing and wanted to put in X number of units. And so we could take that into consideration and say, you know, by coming in here, we want to incentivize that type of building, and we can waive the fee or reduce those fees accordingly.
I totally get that, but that doesn't answer my question. So, I mean, is there a way to say, by size or bedroom? I don't know, if anybody, if you don't agree with me, say so, but I mean, it seems silly, but my tiny house and your house paying the same amount for everything, including traffic?
That's fair.
[laughing].
No, I see, I see your kind of, and has any, did development impact fees been based on square footage?
I'm sorry?
Have they ever been based on a square footage of residential construction?
Some cities calculate it based off of square footage, and basically what we can do is convert those figures to a square foot amount and then charge by the square foot rather than a flat fee. That's definitely something, I'd basically just take the amount of the fee and then charge them per square footage. I'm not certain, well, in some instances, you might save, in other instances, you might end up expending more, just keep that in mind.
What did Bob say?
Oh, Bob said we could do it per bedroom, too.
Okay. So let's say I build my little tiny house, but I have a huge lot. And then, and then I decide I'm going to build mansion on that lot.
They apply again?
Then it comes, okay. And then we could get the fees, the additional fees?
Yes and no. So we do offer in the, in the municipal code language, there is a project credit. So to the extent development impact fees have either previously been paid on behalf of a development project, additional fees required because either they're changing their use or they're upsizing, we would credit that back, saying that you already paid for X amount of your impact, and we wouldn't charge you the full, the full rate.
Okay.
This is not to try to penalize development. Really, what the development impact fees are is just to help offset the cost of, as new development comes in, we increase our population, it becomes more taxing on our infrastructure, on the facilities, on some of these other things. The other alternative is to forego passing the development impact fee, which is certainly an option, but by doing so, then the full burden then gets placed on the shoulders of the taxpayers.
Okay. So then, then I'm hearing two things, based on the questions from the island company. Our residents additions, such as added bedrooms or bathrooms, required to pay impact fees, and you said no, unless additions are found to have impact. So I don't know that that's now the correct answer. And then, I guess, I mean, there needs to be a formula, I would hate to see that be arbitrary down the line, so, you know, to have something by bedrooms now, or whatever, because the bedrooms also is what triggers water, or water triggers bedrooms.
So if you're adding, yeah, if you're adding a bedroom or a bathroom, that's not going to necess, that's not going to lead to an impact. That's the key distinction there. But if you're changing your, if you're changing the footprint of your house, where you're tearing it down and you're rebuilding, you know, you've got a tiny house and you tear that down, you rebuild a mansion, that potentially could have an impact, and we would assess that accordingly.
Again, I could build my tiny house now with the ability to have a second story, and then come back with the second story, and now you're saying...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, if I'm miscommunicating. If you build a second story, that's not going to, unless that second story is a separate unit, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be subject to the development impact fees. But if the second story is a second unit, and you're renting it out, then that would be a new development.
Unless they go to a square foot.
Right.
As currently proposed now, this is on a per basis of a dwelling unit. So if you're going to change the methodology in terms of making it per bedroom...
Or if you change it by square foot, so if you add to the square foot, then you would be subject to that.
Okay. Well, it needs, it needs to be something. I don't know what it, but if all of a sudden now I have six kids, I'm going to impact parks and rec, I'm going to impact transportation, wastewater, landfill, and everything. So I would hate to think that if I have a tiny house and I build it up but don't have to tear it down, that we have some other methodology for that.
Currently, you wouldn't pay that, but if you changed it, you potentially would.
I think you, I think we should, Ollie, help me articulate this, please.
I think we should seriously think about square footage, because bedrooms, I can have a four-bedroom house, but I've got a den, I've got an office, I've got a family room, and I've got a seven-bedroom house.
So if you change it to square footage, then square footage would be, you would be charged regardless, then?
Okay. And Leslie, did you have a question? Come on up, you have to come up, please.
I didn't know how to say we're meeting here.
Oh, no, no, keep going, come on. Center it, this little portion of it. Don't go far, Michael.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley, I'm very in favor of these development impact fees, but I, I want to just, my brain is thinking this way. I could build a 2,000 square foot home and maybe only have two bedrooms. Or I could spend, I could build a 4,000 square foot home and only have two bedrooms. So it seems to me, rather than square footage, it should be based on bedrooms and bathrooms, because if you just go by square footage, you don't know how many people are going to be in there. Maybe they like really, really big bedrooms or really, really big living spaces. The other thing is, that I'm thinking about, is that if I own a little cottage, and it currently has two bedrooms and one bathroom, and then I go upstairs and build on, there should be development fees for that, because you're adding bedrooms, you're adding bathrooms, you're adding people. So I don't know, I don't understand if that is included in this quite yet, but I feel if you're looking at this in the long term, you need to use it wisely and use it so that you do get the fees from these redevelopments of homes.
Right. Thank you. I think that's kind of where, what we're talking about, right? I think we're kind of on the same page, just we'll leave it to the professionals to know how to get there.
Mayor, can I ask, Michael, are you finished yet with your presentation?
No. I just stopped, I'm sorry, I just stopped on questions about housing.
Before we have more public comment, can we just get through his presentation and then...
Okay, sorry, Carl.
It might trigger more questions also.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you have additional questions.
I have a couple. So on lodging per room, you have multifamily, is that like a triplex, I'm assuming? Do you have a single family or a triplex is a multifamily?
For a multifamily?
Like, yeah.
More than one unit, right?
What's that?
More than one dwelling unit.
One dwelling, yeah, so if you have bonus density or something, and there's three separate people living there. So on lodging per room, is that both for a hotel and for apartment complexes? If there's a 30-unit apartment complex versus a 30-room hotel, is there a difference between those?
An apartment complex would fall under multifamily, and lodging would be hotel or a motel.
Okay. And then on a development agreement with any large projects, would, I know that we have the ability to look at different fees, but would the fee structure still be in place, or those can be adjusted either way on a larger-scale project? If it benefited the community, they could be less, if it was more impactful, they could be more, and that's all within a separate development agreement?
In the development agreement, whatever was negotiated, that could be, that could be one of the things. So if there were, as part of entering into a development agreement, if there was a compelling reason to mitigate those or waive them, we would certainly be open to that, but not just, not just to do it just because, right?
And just to be sure, any development agreement, your ordinance says requires adoption by an ordinance, so that would come to the city, and it would be an ordinance which would require three votes.
Right.
And then one more question on, if we were talking about square footage or bedrooms for single family, would there be a way that you could calculate, to come up that if we're charging the fee of, what is it, 3,098, let's just say, for fire or whatever it is, the square footage, if it was less, and we were getting, you know, on average, is there a way to calculate, like if everybody's building 2,000 square foot homes versus 4,000, what is the average-sized square foot home that's being built? And how would that affect either more money in or less money in?
So if we kept it as the current fee, it would, it wouldn't matter if you were a 400-square-foot house or a 15,000-square-foot house, you'd be charged one, one fee. If we went to the other, you would be charged per square foot.
I guess I'm saying, so if there was, let's say there was 10 houses being built at that amount, and it was X amount of money. If those 10 houses that were being built were all small, it'd obviously be a lot less money going into the impact fees than if we were charging a flat. And on the opposite end, if they were all 4,000 or 5,000 square foot homes, there'd be more, but is there a way to kind of figure out what, we would know what that average would be on, would it be, would it be less or more depending on?
Boy, that's a gap shit.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a...
I think what we, so, under the noticing requirements, we've, we've drafted a report, the report is based on the dwelling unit calculation. So if it was the council's direction to go in another direction and look at square footage or bedroom units, the one we'd have to do is, at least for those fees, we would revise the report and then give notice of what those revised fees were and come back if it was going to be substantially different here, because we've told the public, this is what we're intending to do, and if you're going to go in a different direction, then we need to renotice that upon your direction. That does not mean, though, that for any of the other fees, if you're happy with them, you could adopt those tonight, and we come back on a later date for any fees that you want further work on.
Okay, and let me ask you another question, because I asked you this earlier, and you could explain it. Is it today after, or after this reading, that we're not allowed to increase any fees from what's already written?
You cannot increase any fees other than going, starting the process over, doing a public hearing, having the report done. You could definitely decrease them, but you cannot increase them above what has been publicly noticed.
So if we wanted to say the multifamily should be $8,000, we have to start over?
Yes.
Which, you know, we haven't seemed to be in a big hurry. I mean, and this is a big process, as Bob says, and I totally get it, and Richard, I hope you get it, too. So, okay, well, I think we're kind of looking at, we wanted to look at that, single and multifamily.
Well, in the same vein, I, the calculations of occupancy of the single family, multifamily is flawed, because it says we have 2,300 units, and so it's 1.69 people per unit. I think we have less than 1,900 connections, according to Edison, and we have a lot of units that aren't being counted here. And so I think getting the right number of people per unit makes sense. I think what they're doing is they're looking at the, taking the year-round population and dividing by the total number of units, not the year-round population divided by the total number of occupied units. Because on census day, there's like a thousand units not occupied, because there's nobody here. I think it is, it skews the results a little bit.
Well, I'm going to just push back a little bit there. You have to, you have to base it on units. It's problematic for occupied versus not occupied, because the occupied units, when they're, when they're around, they are using all the facilities and all the infrastructure.
Part of the calculation is based upon the occupancy, the number of people occupying that unit. And so if we got, if we have the right number, because this factors into everything.
You mean the numbers should be higher?
I think, I think the number is higher.
Well, that then goes...
Not when you have 10 people living in a two-bedroom house on, in a vacation rental, and 10 people in this one, and, and most of the bigger homes don't have 10 people on them a year-round basis. So there's a lot of people here.
I find it hard to believe there's only 1.69 people per house here.
You think it's more?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm agreeing. That's why I'm agreeing.
And one other thing, I understand that defined development agreements, but I think we need to make some sort of allowance for affordable units that is going to be registered for 55 years, because if I want to add a granny unit, I'm not going to do a DDA for that one unit.
And so Elizabeth Hall has been tasked with researching the validity of these fees with respect to, for low-income housing, and there's some state, state law issues. And so she's, she'll be here in second meeting in September.
Okay, then I have a question with, with what you said, then, if, let's say we just say arbitrarily it's 3.5. What does that do to these numbers? Nothing?
Well, if, if we stick with the square footage, it doesn't change much. If we go by bedrooms, I don't want to skew that, the guys that did the report can just kind of plug the numbers in and see what happens.
But if that really doesn't have any impact, I mean, I see what you're saying, I think there's occup, we all know, I, hell, I'm a family of three now, you know, and I've been for two years. Didn't plan it that way. But anyway, so I, if, but if those numbers really don't change, even though you brought that up, if we go, whatever.
I think that's a question for the...
We have Dino here in the audience from Michael Baker International that maybe answers some of your questions.
And one thing I would just ask is, after this discussion, if there is a determination by the council that you're not going to go with these, well, I think we'd like is to know what you'd like us to base us on, so that we can come back, do the report on that, so you can actually act upon it the next time, if you don't want to stick with the methodology here.
Okay. Hi there. Your turn. You want to respond to anything that your, all these comments?
Yeah, well, the, the discussion about units versus square foot versus bedroom, now, those are good questions, and many communities have gone to square foot per unit, per residential unit, and, you know, in addition to the, the non-residential, the businesses, or bedrooms. Now, the problem I see with that is that in order to establish what the impact of a bedroom is, you have to know how many bedrooms you have, and you have to know how many occupied bedrooms you have at any one point in time. Now, the occupancy rate does seem low, because those are occupied units. In a community like Avalon, where, you know, a unit can be occupied one month and then unoccupied, you know, for a period of time, it's, it's a little bit problematic. So in addition, you see the anomaly with multifamily, you have more occupants in a multifamily unit than you do in a, in a single family, because I think the multifamily units are probably occupied more, more often during the year than a vacation home or a unit like that. So we could, we can go with the bedroom count. The, the problem with that is that if you're adding a new bedroom, you're not necessarily bringing more people to the island, you're providing for a family that maybe had a child, or that's maybe overcrowded. So cities have to weigh that kind of impact and that effect of the fees on what it does to that, that dynamic. But it can be done. And I'm thinking, well, how do we figure out how many bedrooms we have? We can go into the housing element and see what that says, and there might be some ways to do that. I think we do have data from the census on bedrooms and occupied bedrooms and houses, and come up with a total bedroom count, and then see what that occupancy is, and then do the kind of the same numbers and use bedrooms instead of units. Yeah, that could be done.
But if I have babies, I'm impacting, right?
Do you have a baby?
Right.
You know, I, I'm impacting, so you were talking about people coming to the island, but I mean, babies do that, too.
Right, right. So, you know, adding a bedroom is typically not something that, that cities charge a fee for, for remodeling a house, for maybe, you know, adding a room, even a bathroom, onto a master suite or something. It's not something they typically add, have fees for. What they, the typically fees are applied to new housing units, new housekeeping units, like, you know, granny flats, accessory dwelling units, that, that a kitchen, a bathroom, and the bathroom, the bedroom, that kind of thing, which would tend to provide housing for additional residents. It's not guaranteed that there, you're not providing that unit for somebody that already lives here, and that's part of the issue, is that fees do tend to add cost to development, and that cost eventually gets passed down to the people that occupy the units.
Well, could you do, to really skew this thing, you could do the add-ons to single-family residents versus new single-family residents?
We talked about that, having a lower fee for the quote granny flats, the accessory dwelling units, figuring that the occupancy of those would be less than, even less than 1.69, maybe just, you know, one person per, per accessory dwelling unit. You know, the, the per-bedroom fee would probably be, you know, on the order of one-third, I would say, you know, if you were to do it in terms of bedrooms, maybe, you know, maybe $8,000 per bedroom, if you were to do it that way. I would very, I would hesitate to go by square footage, because that makes it, you know, it's just no way to say, what is, how many people are going to occupy a, you know, a thousand square foot home, you know? Some cities do do it, though.
So maybe by the...
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the nexus study for that, how it's done.
And so, what are the ways that people get around it? Because that seems to be a concern as well. So you say, okay, I'm just adding on a bedroom, and let's say, okay, that's $8,000. Nothing is 100% ever. I mean, it seems like people, there are people who can work it, right? I mean, they get around that somehow, like, I don't know.
You go to the office, you have two bedrooms, your den and your office.
And then you turn them in.
Four bedroom house.
And then it's a four-bedroom house, yeah. But one day you put up a wall and nobody knows.
Into a business, you know?
What's that?
You can turn a home into a business just as easily, without, you know, getting the, the proper licenses and the permits to operate a business. You know, if you're changing the use, you know, changing a, a single-family dwelling into a, to a dentist's office, for example, something like that.
I mean, those are, those are pretty easy for us to see, if somebody turns in a dental office, because they're going to want business.
Right. Probably not going to bootleg that one, yeah.
But if you're over on the mainland, it'd be pretty tough to see, or beauty salon or whatever, yeah. Okay. Have we beat up the bedrooms? We beat up the houses right now? And then, how do you want to proceed, Michael? And thank you for now...
See if anybody else wants to...
Yeah, well, we haven't opened the public hearing yet, so. Is there any other questions with what, okay, well then, if there's no further questions, we'll open the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, Rob Walker and Carl Schmeck with the Island Company. As you're all very aware, the Island Company is an integral part of the city of Avalon, and has always supported and contributed to the shared success of our mutually inclusive enterprises. First paved roads and sanitary sewers were constructed by the Island Company over 100 years ago. Further to that, we've added reservoirs, utilities, schools, hospitals, and not to mention a very successful resort operation within the island that supports over 800 people during peak season. The holistic approach to development continues to this day, and much in the same capacity, because we recognize the long-term sustainability is only possible with cooperation from all sides. While we agree on the premise that new development should offset the fair share of mitigation cost, the proposal before you tonight is not the appropriate solution to our unique island community. If adopted, the council risks slowing already tepid economic growth, worsening intractable housing crisis, increasing residence property taxes, and pushing the burden of infrastructure maintenance onto the Avalon residents. One of many local businesses represented here tonight, the Island Company, urges you to vote no on impact fees. There are four key concerns not addressed in the report before you tonight, which you weigh in on your decision, and I'll pass it over to Carl Schmeck, who will itemize and discuss those four items. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Carl Schmeck, Island Company, 150 Metropol. So I'd like to discuss the four concerns that Rob alluded to. The first is to recognize that the proposal before you tonight is effectively a special tax increase on all new development, which will make it difficult for any new, new or existing business to grow. This affects both large and small, includes stores, restaurants, hotels, services, offices, warehouses, even medical facilities. Remember that impact fees were first enacted by municipalities experiencing rapid growth and struggling to bring services to sprawling suburbs. An increase in cost slows growth. So the question you have to ask is, should Avalon be trying to slow economic growth right now? And can it afford to forfeit the sales and transient occupancy tax revenue, which would accompany that growth? As the Chamber of Commerce has reported, and many business owners have experienced, 2019 has been a difficult year for tourism on Catalina. Cross-channel traffic, which grew strongly following the recession, never surpassed its early 2000s peak, nor the lofty reports from the 1920s for that matter, and now appears to be leveling off or even declining. Population growth, while steady, bears no resemblance to the outdated statistics that are cited by the IMPACT study. This is the second key concern. The thesis of generating IMPACT fee revenue relies entirely on overly robust growth projections of visitors and residents. Factoring in the growth slowing effect from this new tax, and it becomes all but certain that fee revenue will never accumulate to implement the promised mitigation projects, which means these funds sit fallow and earmarked accounts indefinitely. Third, the cost of this additional tax, which is supposedly absorbed by new development, will necessarily be passed along to the end user. That's the customer, the buyer, the renter, the guest and the resident. The only way for an entrepreneur's pro forma to absorb a percentage increase in development cost is to increase the product cost by that same percentage every year in perpetuity. That has long-term implications for cost of living here and makes a Catalina vacation an even pricier proposition for visitors. Finally, while the housing shortage is widely acknowledged, also recognize that IMPACT fees make it substantially more difficult to bring new housing to Avalon. Additional housing cost, additional costs will exacerbate the already severe development hurdles one faces trying to build on an island, making one of the most historically challenging aspects of living in Avalon that much harder to solve. Those who can't afford housing might continue to see property values and tax assessments increase as demand outstrips supply, while for everyone else, attainable housing is pushed even further out of reach. This is a demonstrable and well-studied effect of IMPACT fees, but, as we were told, it's beyond the scope of the report before you. In response to some of these concerns, it's been suggested that the city would consider every development on a case-by-case basis, evaluating the precise impacts of a given project and adjusting fees for each particular instance. This, of course, is something a small community experiencing low to moderate growth can afford to do. It's also precisely what IMPACT fees were designed to avoid. IMPACT fees, as outlined here, are well-suited for Los Angeles or Orange County, where a homogenous solution is necessary to control large-scale growth and urban development. But as it sits today, it's not the right solution for Avalon.
Did you time that at your office?
I might have done it once or twice.
Absolutely, absolutely perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate your comment. That was pretty amazing. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say that I, I spent the weekend reading this too, and it's just a lot to digest, and I was just going to ask for you guys to hold it over, because I, I still just can't even form an opinion yet. I can't even make a real public comment until I digest it more, so.
Appreciate, and it sounds as though we're going to be coming back with it anyway, so, so that's good. So, what, oh, no more comments? Okay. Close of the public hearing. So, I just want to comment, and whoever from the staff can answer, and because, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Carl.
Carl. Oh, two Carls right there in a row. The, the money, you said the money sits fallow. I never heard that word fallow, but I'm assuming the money just sits there and doesn't get spent. But that, so tell, tell, Michael or Bob, talk about the money doesn't set fallow.
I'm sorry, you said, tell us about the money for...
Because Carl was saying that better. And then it, you get the money and then nothing happens, and then the money sets, we don't, the money sets fallow.
So we would hold the money until you, until we built up an accumulation in order to pay for the development? So that doesn't mean that we have to wait till there's a, a magic threshold. We could do it in, let's say we got a grant for $100,000, and the project was $125,000, and we had $25,000 sitting in the development fee account. We can utilize the money from the development fee account that's in there, and then whatever monies that we can offset on that.
So let, let me give an example, for instance. Let's say that part of the fee is for wastewater.
Yeah.
And so you impose the development fee, and then there may be a component where you need to expand the capacity of your wastewater plant, but you also need to put in your pipes up there to take the effluent out. So you could use part of that money for the effluent pipes. And then once you get enough, you may have, you know, once there's enough development up there that requires the need to expand the wastewater plant, you've got the accumulated funds from all the development.
Right.
And once you hit a critical mass, you know that there's going to be enough effluent coming down, you then take that money and you use it. And so that's the purpose of it, but it doesn't mean that you, you, you may not be, depending on the projects, and there's a whole list of projects, you may be using part of it along the way. For instance, fire, you're going to have to put, you're going to have to put fire capacity up there right away. So you're going to use that. You're going to, you're going to have to have some infrastructure for the effluent coming out. And then the, eventually, when there's enough development, you'll use that for your big, for your big end product. Once you exceed your capacity.
And then, did you have something else you wanted to add to that, Michael?
No, no, that was good.
Okay. So then, talked about the cost of doing business and it, and, and all of that, that, and I don't know at what point, what size of a project you go, oh, this is where we have a development agreement. You know, I, I don't think you have a development agreement if I build a home to maybe get my costs reduced, but, but it's, at what point do you, do you kind of realize when a development agreement is needed versus, no, you just pay these fees? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, I would say that's kind of project-dependent, and it's, you know, the scale and the size and the scope of the project that would necessarily negate, or you would want a development agreement for.
Usually if it's like infill, like, well, let's assume that there's some infill work that, that you can do, there's a vacant lot out there that, that's not utilized, probably not going to, you're just going to assess the fees. Usually development agreements can, in some communities, they can go, I've seen it as low as five units, you know, but you need a, a small little development agreement for certain area. You know, if, but it definitely, I would say, if it's over 10, 10 or 15, we want, we want to have a development agreement.
Right, right.
But again, it's, it's looking at what each individual product is, and then determining, can we do this without a development agreement? And it's always depends on, if there's infrastructure on that needs to be added for that, for that project, and it's a number of units, then we'd like to have a development agreement, because that way you do it all at once versus if it's one-off. The infrastructure's usually there, you don't need that.
So, okay, and so, and so I have a question. So, we don't have development IMPACT fees, and somebody builds 150 units, and all we get is building permits?
No, we haven't. Already in the ordinance, if that were to happen, we were going to require a development agreement, period.
Okay, not 150 units, five units, whatever the heck, or a restaurant, or a whatever. And you build that, and all you, how, the answer is, and I think we know the answer, so we don't have those fees, and maybe you can answer this, Island Company, we don't get those development fees from anybody, we just get building permits. How do we pay for all the infrastructure and everything we need, need to do, and the stuff we, we need money for even now? What would be your solution to solving our problem sitting up here, which is your problem because you live here? Did you have some suggestions?
Probably a, a bigger problem than I could solve, just standing here in the next three minutes. I would suggest that, as, as Mr. Campbell pointed out, development, development agreements are a part of almost all projects of any scale. Traditionally, a development agreement would be the forum for negotiating appropriate impacts and determining what the right trade between new development and incentive package to the city to offset cost of development would be.
Well, I think we've already said we do, we will do that and do that, and I think when we discussed with the Island Company in particular, that was the way we were going. So, I mean, so in light of that, what's your opposition? In light of, we're going to have a, if we would have a development agreement with y'all, and which would, you know, land swaps, whatever, the trade-offs would be in whatever, those fees probably would, I would imagine, would go down, and so then what would be your opposition?
We could speak specifically to the nuance of, of what, and it's addressed in the letter, and, and again, would take a little more time, about what specifically would be offset by the trade. So when we were discussing it, for instance, it wasn't entirely clear whether a trade of land, as an example, would offset merely the parks and recreation component of the IMPACT fee, or would it apply to others? And that's still not entirely clear from the letter. And I think our greater concern is looking beyond a housing project, as, as you've referenced. This has permanent implications for development in Avalon, and doesn't just affect the Island Company, and doesn't just affect one project that may or may not happen in the near term. It affects business indefinitely, and of, of big and small scale. So I think that's, that's the greater opposition, is looking beyond the immediate future.
Okay, and again, but you don't, you don't have solutions to how to solve our long-term problem if, if, if we just hired, if we just had building permits and sprinkler fees.
Sure.
Can we, can we talk like this? Is this okay like this?
This is fine.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I mean, I think we need, we need a dialogue.
If we, if, if adventure's off, I'll, I'll stop.
Okay.
But this is fine right now.
Okay.
Mayor, I couldn't agree more that we do need a dialogue, that we do need a, a workshop and a forum, and there needs to be a way to determine how to become sustainable in this matter. I don't think that comes from taking a solution that fits well for large, rapidly growing municipalities, and, and forcing it to fit into these unique island community. I think we have to have a different approach, and it has to come from, from workshops and, and from a task force that was, that's built up of local business owners, of which the Island Company would be just one. When the, when the gentleman from Michael Baker spoke, and, and there was discussion regarding the use of square footages or bedrooms with regard to sizing the single-family IMPACT fee, I thought it was interesting that the discussion seems to be trying to understand, you know, the point was brought up that, while bedrooms in Avalon, Avalon aren't necessarily occupied, because Avalon's a different place, it's a vacation community. And that, to me, is emblematic of, of why this IMPACT fee discussion is not appropriate for, for Avalon. It is a unique place, it's not, it doesn't bear relationships to the other communities that the fee study was borrowed from, and I don't think it's right for this community.
Okay.
If I could just, for the record, just, just indicate, so the council knows, we've had, in the development of these fees, we've had some study sessions, we've, we've, we've had Michael Baker, you know, meet with stakeholders. So it's not like this is, something's being sprung on everyone. There has been a process to reach this point. And the whole issue is, is, you know, now we've got a final product, do you want to go forward with it, or do you want to adjust?
Well, and I think the situation is, okay, when you look around this room, or people that are probably listening to us, there's not a lot of landholders in this land, in this, in this island, and there's not a lot of people that are going to be selling land to people who want to come develop, unless, so, so.
I, I don't disagree, and I think that's, that's one of the fundamental misconceptions about this IMPACT fee discussion, is that it is only applying to one entity. Yes, the Island Company owns most of the developable land. And yes, we do stand to share, to take the, the brunt of, of fees from this proposal. However, it's going to affect local business owners. It's going to affect any store that wants to expand.
You're, you're okay, keep coming to Carl.
It's going to affect any store that wants to expand. It may affect local residents who want to build, probably will, from the conversation tonight, who want to expand their home. It will have longstanding, far-reaching implications, and I think the question is whether we want to take the risk, not understanding it well enough tonight, to make the bet that it won't have harms for this community.
Well, maybe the conversation tonight, and people watching, will get a little more interested than they have been in the last couple of years, because they really haven't come out and said anything.
I certainly hope so.
So, okay. I already closed it, right? We, we, that was just...
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Council?
I have one question for Scott. So in, in the ordinance right now, does it say how many units it would be to have a development agreement, or is that just arbitrarily?
No, does not. Does not.
Okay.
Usually requested by the developer.
Okay. So where does that put us, city manager?
I don't think it's getting, I don't think the resolution's getting adopted, and I don't think you're doing the first reading of the ordinance.
So I, I, I guess the, our question is, since we're all here, where's Dino though? There he is, hi, Dino. You want to give us direction on how you would like to see, it's either come back with something concrete, maybe have further discussions with the Island Company, or you, you could go ahead and adopt this as is? Just give us direction, and, and we'll, and we'll come back to the council with whatever you want.
Well, instead of having another ad hoc committee to look at these things, I would think, to a certain degree... I would think, to a certain degree, the Island Company, if you know other stakeholders, people that would be impacted, I think you all should be talking, and it doesn't sound like you have been talking to anybody else, maybe you have. We've put it out there for months and months and months and months, without much response, other than you and Mr. Freeman, so I think I'm, we want to, in a way, put it back in your, in your court for a while, and if you want to have another meeting with the staff here, they're more than welcome to do that. But I think what I'm, the takeaway so far that I'm coming with, I think we've answered some of the questions, maybe not to, to your, to what you approve, but we say we would, we would look at development agreements, I think that answers, that should solve some of your dilemma. And I know what we have to look at as a council, and I don't know what these guys are thinking, but I know we've been working on these, I believe in development fees, so, that's just me. But I think we want to look at the bedrooms, is that what we want to look at? Not square footage, but bedrooms? Or is there a way to look at both? I don't know.
Could, could I just offer a suggestion?
Please.
That staff internally, we will reach out to the Island Company, and to whoever else that we can think of. Once again, we come back with more ideas and suggestions. I would really not like to spend the monies on the, a new study yet until, and lawyer fees that have been accumulating, and not, Scott, that's not a dig, because we want to make sure everything we're doing is legal, and so we will come back to you and offer some suggestions, see if you buy in on that, if the public buys in on it, and then we will know how to proceed forward with either redoing our study, or...
I mean, I feel bad, as many times as I've seen it, and I just picked up on the bedroom thing today. So, I mean, that's, and like Bob says, it's a work in progress, and blah, 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 but...
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Mike, if, do we have, have we done enough work to justify increasing the sewer connection fee? It's already on the books.
The sewer connection fee, the capacity charge here?
Yeah.
You can consider that, I mean, that's a, that just needs to be considered at a public meeting. It's not subject to any public hearing, so you can move forward with...
And the saltwater connection fee?
That's correct.
So we could actually implement some of this stuff after another public hearing? Because we already have a sewer connection.
You could implement the capacity charge now, and then we could bring back the development impact fee, or fees, later.
Wait, so those are, the fees on our regular fee schedule, which we have to have a public hearing, one public hearing for, and they get adopted yearly. So if we're going to do that, we would still have to bring that forward as a public hearing for whatever fees you're suggesting.
Capacity charge was the nuance different, because I thought they, that was only consideration at a public meeting, but it was not required to have a public hearing.
I'm taking it as our regular fee schedule that we, that those charges are on.
Okay. So, but, okay, but what is, whatever those capacity charges you're talking about, then what impact does that have? Because here we're doing a cost-of-service study for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste. So don't we need that, too, because that could change that capacity charges?
Could.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we don't want to adopt those now?
No, no, I was not supposed to adopt them tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Okay, where does that put us?
So I, I think with the direction, well, direction from, my understanding of direction of counsel is, is to come back after having some discussions with some stakeholders, and also internal discussions about the type of development fees for, for home-specific, what would be the options for square-foot bedroom, and come back with those options. Have a presentation with the council, get directions, and then before, and that's without spending any money on the actual report, and also have discussions with the stakeholders, and then come back with some general concepts about, okay, here's what it would be if we did it by square foot, here's what we did it by, if we did it by dwelling in it, get final direction, and then go ahead and revise the report, which would be largely the same for the other stuff, but for the homes, we could adjust it. And we'd also have further discussions with some of the stakeholders, now that everyone knows that they're, we're close to getting it, so that we can come back, and we'd also have an additional, well, council person, too.
Right, so you talked about square-foot bedrooms and bathrooms. Do we need, is square footage really an issue, or is it bedrooms and/or bathrooms? I don't want them to look three different ways if they don't have to.
Edison doesn't look at bathrooms. Doesn't matter how many bathrooms you have, you could use one, either upstairs or downstairs. And so bedrooms, like I say, the problem with bedrooms is I've got a den, I've got a dining room, and I've got an office and two bedrooms. That must be a five-bedroom house. Taking your example, how do people try to get around this?
How are you on the taxes? Are you listed as a three-bedroom house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and our municipal code does have definitions of what a bedroom is, and there's a certain definition, and we regularly deal with that at the planning commission.
The mayor was saying, how do people get around it, so Ole's pointing out how you could get around it.
Well, yeah, and that would be doing something illegal, and so we'd have to, that's a code enforcement thing, and we'd have to catch them.
And we're knocking on doors all the time?
Understood, yeah, I know.
Okay, so again, do...
I just...
I don't want to...
I don't know how you address that.
So Ole, are you suggesting square footage is a better way?
I'm suggesting square footage, but I have arguments against square footage, too. It's, staff come back in the night, just.
Yeah. Square footage, bathrooms, and bedrooms?
Yeah.
Square footage.
No bathrooms, bathroom don't count.
Square footage and bedrooms.
Square footage and bedrooms.
Okay, so, okay.
And we'll have some examples of what other cities have done.
Okay.
For that discussion. Okay, great.
Okay, great. And now we are going into closed session. Somebody going to read that up?
We have two closed sessions, both conference with real property negotiators. Properties were listed on the agenda. We're discussing price in terms of payment.
Okay, and thank you all for coming, and good night, Tony.
It's Rob. And Carl's on.
Yes, can we do that?
No.
And we are back from closed session.
And there was no reportable action, and on both the, both items, there was no decision in part due to a potential lack of quorum through the mayor's residence, which may be 300 feet within these properties, which precluded any action being taken. Or substantive discussion.
Okay, and with that, meeting adjourned.